Council meeting for June 17th of 2024. Please rise and Councilman Shuddy is online, so I will give the prayer tonight.
Dear God, we ask for your blessing upon the entire city of Watertown. We ask that you bless and guide our deliberations tonight and as we continue to govern and do what's best for the city of Watertown. We ask for protection for all our frontline employees and everyone who risks their own life to save those of others. We thank you very much for the blessing of living in Watertown and these United States, and we praise you in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Jerrance?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Bueller?
Yep.
Danforth?
Here.
Holene?
Here.
Thank you.
Coram is established. I will take a motion to approve the agenda with one change. Item M on the consent agenda, I had the dates wrong. Chris Carter's term will run through 20, well, will run to May of 2027 and Mike Lukin's term until 2028. So just had the dates wrong on those. Got that adjusted, Kristen? All right. With that motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Any questions on this council? Any comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 6A is a progress update on the street maintenance facility, project 2122. We will kick it off to whoever.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager Mac. Heath Von I, Public Works Director, Assistant City Manager, have got an update here, present to the council this evening. Of course, I have a couple of my esteemed colleagues, part of the Public Works team, Street Superintendent Baneen is with us, along with City Engineer Peterson. Three of us, along with our design professionals and a multitude of folks all along the way the last several years here, put quite a bit of work into this project. And I think that what we've got before you tonight is a good comprehensive update on where this project is at from a, not only where we're at currently today, but also a good timeline and background on how we got to where we're at today, which I think is pretty important, given the amount of time that has elapsed since this project was kicked off initially, not even with this council, but with the previous council prior to this, this exact body that's before us here today. So we'll walk through some of that timeline and try to provide as much clarity as we can as to how we've gotten where we're at today.
Director Von I, would you like to go through your entire presentation and then have questions or have them peppered throughout?
Um, I don't know if I have a hard preference either way. I could see value both ways. We could, if, if the council feels it's, it's imperative to interject something along the way, please feel free. If it's something you can jot down and we can cover at the end, that might keep it a little more streamlined.
Okay. Thank you. So council, by and large, if you can, save your questions to the end, but if you have something pressing at that moment, then by all means. Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into too much detail on the presentation here, I thought I'd just give a brief synopsis, not related to this slide, but just more off the top of my head regarding capital improvement planning, because I for one would be the first to raise my hand if somebody were to ask in a crowded room whether this, this particular project has followed all the conventional processes in a smooth streamlined manner. And I would raise my hand and say, no, not really, because we've had a couple of hiccups along the way. We've had a couple of interruptions, a couple of shifting of gears, if you will. One of those, we'll talk about in detail later on, a couple of them actually, when we talk about the timeline. But I just wanted to generally paint a picture that the, a normal capital improvement process would be initiated by, starting with a cost estimate. And that cost estimate is then used to set a preliminary budget. And that preliminary budget thing gets programmed into the CIP. And once that CIP is granted by the council, the staff then move forward with carrying out that capital improvement project, which of course, at that point on, includes a myriad of events and series of activities, hiring a consultant, going through the design phase, reviewing that design, updating the cost estimate, make sure your budget is within the means you need it to be, moving forward with a bid, then onto construction, of course. So that's in a general, real quick recap of what a streamlined CIP process would look like. As you'll note through this presentation, we've hit a couple detours along the way, and I think that's, there's a couple of good reasons in here why we've lagged in the time to get this thing across the finish line. So back to the presentation, the formal presentation here that we've got prepared, I want to thank Justin, City Engineer Peterson, for helping assemble this data, along with Superintendent Baneen. Chief Financial Officer Bob Zine has provided a lot of good information for us to put into here as well, along with the guidance of City Manager Mac. So definitely not a Heath presentation here, but a load of teamwork that went into this. Some of the history of our current street maintenance facility, this is what really kicked this need off some nine years ago now, when Superintendent Baneen first started budgeting and slating a new street facility into the city's long-range CIP. We're dealing with a current facility that we all know the condition of. I think almost everybody in this room's been on-site at this facility. It's very aged, it's very antiquated, it's parsed out through several different structures throughout the site. And the square footage of storage needs is simply falls way short of what a, what I would consider a normal, minimal operational needs would be. You look at the age of some of the buildings here, we're dealing with the 1940s and 50s structures, along with a couple of newer additions that are still 20 years old plus themselves in that regard. So early on in this project timeline, again, like I mentioned, nine years ago in 2015, Superintendent Baneen first identified the need of her new street facility and placed it on the long-range CIP with the hopes or anticipation that it would be funded for and built in 2020 or 2021, or a crossover between those two years. Subsequent to that, although we don't have formal restricted reserves that we build here in the city of Watertown, Superintendent Baneen continued to work with then Mayor, then previous Mayor, mayors, probably two, it's two past mayors before the current mayor, and to try to earmark funds for this project gearing up for it to happen in 2020 or 2021. One of the interesting things to note here that I'm not sure many are aware of, but a lot of those funds, and again, even though they weren't specifically locked and loaded for the street facility, they, they were earmarked, I'll say, with that intent. And in 2021, we had an amazing opportunity to get our airport terminal built. That project, for whatever reason, in the past, was not on the radar for funding, a local match fund. It, it, it had not gone through the same series of planning events that Superintendent Baneen had put forth for the street facility. But when you have an opportunity like we did to proceed with a new airport terminal with the federal funding that was immediately upon us, it made perfect sense to do what we did, and we pulled that $5 million out of the capital outlay and put it towards that airport terminal project. Staff still joke today that Rob, at minimum, has due a plaque at the airport terminal for helping donate to the cause of the new airport terminal. We've not got that installed yet, but we do often joke about it because, because it was a need at the time, and it was needed to be prioritized based on the federal funding that was on our laps for that airport terminal to happen. So what that essentially did is reset any dollars that were earmarked for the street facility back down to zero. So in April of 2021, Rob and I together at that time had worked to scrounge up a cost estimate, like I referred to earlier, kind of resetting it at step one of a CIP process. You figure out a budget estimate, a cost estimate for budgetary purposes. And at that time, we had a few regional facilities to consider, to compare to. One of them was in Dual County, down by Clear Lake. The DOT had recently reconstructed a new maintenance facility down there. We looked at the cost per foot of that building. City of Brookings, by this time, I think was a couple of years into their new facility for street maintenance operations in Brookings. We looked at that cost per square foot. And we had a known estimate of square footage that we needed at ours, and we plugged in this budgetary number of seven and a half million back over three years ago now. I think that this number was actually set earlier than this, but then carried into that 2021 budgeting, for budgeting purposes. Subsequent to establishing that number, we then ended up issuing a bond. I think most of the councils full well aware of this $15 million bond that was issued in April of 21. That bond was in part to fund three different projects. One was the street facility at seven and a half million, the city hall project at five, and then the 10th Avenue North project that was going on at that time, we decided to include in that bond, just so we didn't tax the otherwise needed street repair money for that year. So we plugged two and a half million in for that as well. And then fast forward, after any bond referral period and the onset of a new form of government, in August of 21, we picked this back up again. And we went out to RFP, a request for proposals for design services. We were specifically targeting, targeting pre-designed services, because we knew we had to do site and locate where we wanted, the most optimal location for the new street facility. So we made that a part of this RFP, and that was the, excuse me, that was the first step that we carried out with JLG Architects in October of 2021. That work carried out, like I said, started in October, ran through November. We explored 12 different sites, 12 different locations throughout the city. You'll see them on this map with these red flags. Majority of these locations, well, I believe it's a majority, looking at them here, were all city-owned land. A few of them were not city-owned land. The one that we ended up honing in on and targeting was out along Highway 20. And of course, as you know, we went ahead and proceeded with the procurement of that land of the old Sail Barn property along Highway 20. We ended into a land purchase agreement for that land to the tune of $1.2 million. You'll also recall, at that time, the cafe had just been purchased by a third party, and that was a developer that was working on behalf of Dollar General. We ended up doing a land swap with them, and they are now on this location here that they're building now today for their new Dollar General location. So this map does represent the current land. You'll also recall along the way that we picked up an additional four acres, the owners of that land wanting rid of that, able to combine it with our 16 acres that we have, and that's the land mass that we're working on. This northerly 8.9 remnants is currently, we're working with WDC on potentially marketing that and taking any sales that we get from that land to put towards, obviously could be used to recoup the cost of the street facility. So after the land purchase, or during that process, we were continuing with JLG Architecture. In April of 22, we executed an addendum to their contract for the full design and bidding services. That approximately equated to 7 and 1/4% of the construction cost, and we are currently still under contract with them through bidding. The contract for design has pretty well been fulfilled. We've got a 100% set of construction drawings that could be used to go out to bid as soon as the council feels it's appropriate, necessary to do that. So after we then amended that contract, April of 22 through August of 22, we worked on schematic designs for the street facility. The schematic design is a very detailed and thorough effort by the architect to talk to the existing city staff, explore what the current functions are at the current site. They vet the needs of the facility through conversations with the street facility staff. And I'm talking beyond just the street superintendent. I don't want to say just, but Rob's obviously got a crew of guys. There's about 15 people in total in the street division. And so everybody from admin staff, his support staff in the office, to his foremen, to the boots on the ground, street operators that are running the street sweepers and snowplows, were all interviewed, asked what they, their thoughts were on a new facility, what some of their primary needs were that could be put into a new facility. JLG did a very good job at vetting that process. And then, of course, I was involved in that, along with City Engineer Peterson, in those discussions to add any commentary along the way that we could. Some of the basics that came out of that, we were shooting for roughly 40,000 square foot of equipment storage. Currently, the indoor equipment storage is about 13,400. That 40,000 is comparable. Again, if you look at other facilities in the region, City of Brookings, Minnehaha County are a couple that we've toured recently. Our design ended up falling a little bit short of that 40,000, and you'll see that in some subsequent slides here, but we're, we're in the 30s. But we feel like that's something that will still work very effectively and get us by for several years to come. I also wanted to note, the heated storage at the current facility is split between these two buildings, the northwesterly building and the north-central building. Those are the only two heated storage spaces that we have, and they only total 7,100 square feet. That is a very nominal number when you look at heated storage needs for a street maintenance operation. This leaves dozens of pieces of equipment outside in the cold all winter long that are plugged in to hot starts. Those pose their own series of risks and inefficiencies throughout the, the other shed that they're, they're housed in. And that, that part alone is, I don't know how to describe it, other than it's, it's really one of the more basic needs of winter maintenance operations, is having good, adequate indoor heated storage. If you don't get those vehicles in to thoroughly warm up overnight or through the off-hours when they're not being used, it is very, very hard on that equipment, even if they are plugged in and outside. The efficiencies gained by having that indoor heated storage is very impactful, from startup and warm-up time to getting the crews out on the streets and plowing. You're talking hours and hours of vehicle warm-up time that would be eliminated by having adequate indoor heated storage. Those hours and hours through the winter months of warm-up time equate to a lot of fuel, they equate to a lot of staff time waiting for equipment to warm up, they equate to wear and tear on a very expensive piece of equipment, whether it be the hydraulic systems, the engine itself, all those things that come along with it. And I realize I'm probably preaching to the choir on some of this, this knowledge is fairly, could be considered common sense, that heavy diesel equipment likes to run and turn on and start up in warm conditions. But I just wanted to emphasize how much more efficient our operations will be when we get this equipment inside a heated storage of adequate space. Of course, the other things we targeted for our needs that were identified, we need adequate material storage needs. We've got a lot of crushed aggregate, recycled asphalt, all kinds of different materials, cold patch material for winter patching needs. And you'll see on this existing aerial that, you know, we're kind of cramped in here and we do what we can with material onsite. But what you don't see in this aerial is we've got several other sites throughout town that are city-owned property that Rob and his crews have leveraged their use of and stockpiled materials on as well. So to have all that located in one central location was identified as an ideal necessity for operations. Of course, office space. Some of the issues with the current facility include the HVAC system, roofing, the fire suppression system that's either non-compliant or nonexistent, inadequate lighting in most of these facilities when staff are trying to do mechanical type of work in, in those conditions, so on and so forth. These are the, some of the necessities identified through JLG's research with the staff. So then fast forward, July of 2022, I interject this point just because it had an impact on one of our detours here that I mentioned earlier. The city hall bid came in at 5.8 million, and that was estimated to be about three and a half million. At that time, that thing caused us to pump the brakes on the city hall, the Wells Fargo remodel project, and consider other alternatives. And so in August of 22, we started working with JLG on what a city complex or city services center might look like. So that was, that was one of our detours that we had to take on this project. In August of 22, we also decided to enter into contract with RJM Construction as a construction manager at risk. They, of course, are, are CMAR on the ICE Arena project. We've got some good working knowledge with them, some good working experiences with them. And at that time, we felt the CMAR process would be very beneficial through the design phase, at least, to help check off the design components of a structure like this. There are a lot of components with a street maintenance facility, besides just the offices and the heated storage. You have the mechanical bays, you've got the sign shop where the sign and signal technicians housed. Those repair bays include a myriad of pieces of equipment, tools, and machinery that are important for the operations, not only for the street division, but also the rest of the city's fleet. So we felt that the expertise of a construction manager to help point out any design proficiencies that we could all along the way would be critical, and so we plugged them in as well through that contract in August of 22. August 22 through April of 23, that's when we kind of vetted the, the city services center. That was our attempt to look at what kind of efficiencies could be gained by combining the city hall function out, out there on Highway 20 with the street facility. JLG provided some very good renditions, they, they did some space needs analysis, they plugged in what that building could look like. And if you recall, back in December of 22, that's when we presented a lot of that information all the way through March of 23, where we held public meetings on this concept of a city services center. That idea was not met favorably overall, and so that's where we reset back to just designing a standalone street facility. So in April of 23 through this February, that's when the final layouts and functional review of the street facility were accomplished. This is a, this is the schematic of what we have in our final design for the street facility. This blue shaded area would be the admin area. There's a series of offices, conference room, break room for Rob and his entire crew. There's locker rooms also for the entire crew to utilize. And out here, we've got a little over 34,000 square feet of heated vehicle storage. And then as you move westerly across the site, this is the sign shop where the sign and signal technician would house all of their permanent street name signs, regulatory signs, and then also all the temporary traffic control, the barricades and things like that, along with their street striping paint machine that gets housed in here as well. And then if you move westerly from there, you've got repair bays. And we essentially designed two drive-through repair bays that could function as four repair bays in totality. The drive-through function is if you ever had a tractor-trailer event where you had a truck and a trailer or some longer piece of equipment needing to take up an entire repair bay, that you've got that possibility. We went with one stationary lift in this design, the other areas, if lifts are needed. A lot of shops these days, mechanic shops are going with portable lifts, and those are, those are some things that we would procure through the FFNE process to meet the shop needs. And then there is an office for a, a city mechanic or a shop mechanic here, along with tool room and parts store room. Then further west, the last piece of the building at the end is a wash bay. Most all the facilities, the most recent ones we toured, had wash bays directly connected to them. There's obvious benefits to this, especially in the winter months where you're dealing with the salt and sand conditions on our equipment. Getting that stuff washed off on a daily, if not weekly, but possibly daily basis proves to be very beneficial to the longevity of those pieces of equipment, helps prevent that corrosion and rust and everything from occurring, given the conditions that all the equipment works in. This is a wash bay also, I want to emphasize, that, that would not be intended to be strictly or solely for the use of the street division. This, of course, would be accessible by the entire city fleet, whether it's the police department, the fire department, other divisions of Public Works, the park and rec department. Anybody that has a city vehicle or city piece of equipment would be allowed access and use to this wash bay. So I wanted to emphasize that point, too, that, that, that mindset of centralized functionality also trickles over in these repair bays. This was designed with the street division in mind, but also ultimately with the plan that we would have a centralized city fleet division. And that, I can't tell you enough, I can't tell you specifically off the top of my head, but I can tell you how much that would tremendously help benefit the city's planning, repair, and replacement of our entire fleet of vehicles and equipment. Right now, it's kind of each department to their own, or some, some levels, even each division to their own, on planning for vehicles and equipment replacement. So having a centralized fleet was in mind with laying out these repair bays and these offices to meet those needs in the future. These are some more of the details about the building layout, the square footages. If you recall, I think the office base we had targeted earlier on in our concept planning was around 6,000 square feet on that earlier slide. We ended up landing a little shy of that at a little less than 5,500. The heated storage fell short of our targeted 40,000 at 34,000 square feet. The maintenance area, that's this entire orange area on here, totals just shy of 14,000 square feet. And then other considerations for these site improvements include the grading of the site, the concrete. There's a lot of exterior apron paving and things like that that has to occur in and around a building like this. Storm sewer on the site, fencing, and then other site improvements. So as we mentioned earlier this year in February, we completed the construction plans. JLG was able to complete those with the, with our input and our tours and everything that we poured into the work to establish what this site can most optimally look like. In April of this year, staff scheduled a couple of tours at Brookings and Minnehaha County. There were a couple council members that were able to make those tours, just to try to help gauge where we're coming from with these designs, how we've selected, what we put into the specifics of the designs. I thought that was a pretty helpful tour and helped provide a lot of good valuable information from those other resources as well. Since April, we've been reviewing financial options and what makes sense to ultimately set a budget. If you look at the next steps, I'll sneak ahead just a little bit here. One of the first next steps, in our view, would be to amend the current budget. That seven and a half million that I mentioned earlier that we've been working from has obviously passed us. And you'll see in a later slide here, it is, just by coincidence, exactly doubled on what will be we'll be proposing for a budget for the council to move forward with. Before I get into those details, I just wanted to share some of the vetting that went into how we landed on our budgetary number. We've gotten final cost estimates from the CMAR, and those were to the tune of around, they varied between 21 and 23 million as we got into the later stages of design. Those numbers included things that are no longer prevalent, which included design contingencies, for example, to the tune of, I think, $1 million, Justin, the design contingencies? The design is finalized, so you can take that design contingency out. So as you whittle out some of these things that RJM had in their conservative budget that they needed to have in there because they weren't complete yet, it whittled down to a lesser number than that 21 to 23. The, the other thing that we did is we approached some local contractors to have them give us a good, I want to call it a brush over, but yet they gave us some pretty good detailed, a good hard look at this design. We shared the design plans, the construction plans that JLG produced with some local contractors, and they brought back to us some cost estimating for us to use, again, for budgetary purposes. And so we'll talk about that number and how we're comfortable moving forward with a number like that. But the next steps here that I'll quick ramble off, and then we'll go into more detail. The first would be to amend that budget. You know, we obviously simply can't work from that seven and a half million. That's a three to four-year-old number. I would cite the fact that because it has doubled doesn't mean that this project went off the rails, or that Rob's designed a Taj Mahal, or requested frivolous things in a facility that aren't necessary. Really, what that simply means, and I'd equate it to other real hard numbers that we've observed, like the ICE Arena. Our target on that was 15 at one point in about the same timeframe in 2021, 2020, and that over-doubled, over the doubled, coming in at 36 million. So we've seen, and then the City Hall bid, estimated at 3.5 a couple of years ago, it came in at 5.8. That wasn't quite double, but it came in a lot more expensive. Point being, we all know the impacts that COVID has had since 2020 and 2021, when that seven and a half million initial estimate and budget was set. And now we're just having to deal with those realities and move forward in as constructive and conservative ways we can to still try to get a project accomplished. Once that budget is amended, the next step, number two there, would be the budgetary planning. And this is where the chief financial officer and city manager were coming to play, working with us on, you know, what, what does a new budget of 15 million look like in the CIP for 2025? What does it look like, if not good, in '25? What does it look like for the long-range CIP to plug it in in '26 or '27? That's really the next step where that detailed analysis would occur. And opportunistically, we're going through the CIP budget process right now. Kristin has sent those documents out to all departments. We're cranking out all the capital requests. And if we're able to establish a budget amount that we can plug into those other considerations, that'll help tell the whole story of what 2025 and beyond could look like. Step three, of course, depending on the amended budget and the budgetary planning, we would do one of two things. The step three, we'd either issue a bond or, to some degree or some tune of an amount that is satisfactory to the council and fits into the financial plan for the city. Or we shelf the design and hold it for future construction, which could be, again, 2026, 2030, whatever that might look like. Thank you for not hitting me, Rob, for saying 2030. And then, of course, the subsequent items from there would be to bid the project, award a contract, and then carry on with construction. Again, emphasizing what's next, amending a budget and financial planning would be the next two steps from the staff's perspective. These are the updated project costs that I was talking about earlier and would like to walk through here. After looking at the RJM estimates, our CMAR, and after looking at our local contractor estimates, we landed on a construction cost of about 12.6 million. Some of the other numbers that you have to build in and keep into consideration until we're done with a project like this would be the construction contingency. We all know that things come up during construction, and so that's an important number to hold. That 3% might be a little bit light, but nonetheless, it's, it's a number that we need to hold into consideration. That puts your total construction at just under 13 million. And then now you have what we'd call the soft costs, the ones that everybody oftentimes wonders, you know, the details of what's in there. We tried to provide a little bit of clarity here. But owner-provided items include your FF and E, your furnishing fixtures and equipment, any of your IT or AV, audio/video items throughout the facility, which includes security cameras, all the technology needed for the offices and for the conference room, any meeting room technology. I'm just trying to recall if there's any specialty technology in this facility.
Well, I don't think there was, other than cameras.
The construction administration line item, that would be the remaining amount to JLG, the architects, to answer and facilitate any design-related construction admin questions that come up throughout the construction phase. And then the last item listed on here is the sand-salt building. This, the preliminary estimates on this were pushing $2 million. I'm not sure why they were that high, but they were. But we, we made some calls. We talked to some building providers that provide salt-sand sheds, both the canopy type that we've got right now, kind of a hoop barn with a canopy on top, and also wood structures that DOT have gone to simply because of the wind factor in those canopies. You can imagine not liking the wind in certain parts of South Dakota. This location out there on Highway 20 is pretty wide open to the wind, and I believe this 700,000, did that accommodate a wood structure, Justin? So we would likely, likely go to the wood-sided. You'll see these at some of the DOT locations. I think they've got one up off the Summit X. There might be one local here. But they're, they've transitioned to these wood-salt-sand buildings. Nonetheless, that number, we think the reality, the real number to get one built on our site would come in a lot less than some of those preliminary estimates were. That brings us to this 14.8 number. And using rounding in our favor at 15 million, that's where that budgetary number of 15 million that I mentioned earlier comes into play. We also, through vetting these numbers, looked at what phasing this might do. And it didn't really pencil out to be very favorable. Obviously, the longer we take to build something and the more we plug in adding remobilization and all those things into a construction project of this nature, it's going to cost more. So in real rough estimates, this ended up looking like about a $2 million increase if we were to phase this out into two phases, where you do the offices and the vehicle storage as the first phase, and then do the, the repair bay, the wash bay, and the sign and signal shop as a second phase. The costs just end up coming in about 2 million bucks more. That could be found favorable in the right financial funding situation, and we'll keep this in our, in our back pockets as an idea. Staff would not recommend this just because of the cost savings that we would incur if we were to do the full thing at once, even if doing the full thing meant waiting some number of years to do the whole thing at once. Some other schematics that we landed on through the design phase, you'll recall, many of these were delivered to the council a couple different times, I think back in October of '23, and again, earlier this year in January, I want to say, when Mike Schellen from JLG was here to present on some of our design. But this is looking at the, at the front of the building, looking northwesterly. You're standing off the southeast corner of the building. Highway 20 would be off to the right out of the picture. Of course, the admin area is up front here, and then behind it, you've got the full heated vehicle storage, repair, sign and signal shop, repair bays, and wash bay, all in a row to the west. This is a east elevation, so you're standing on the east side of the facility, looking straight west. South elevation, south view. Again, you can see the great majority of this building is, is well beyond the, the front offices. These first two doors are the heated storage, heated vehicle storage. This third door is the sign and signal shop. These next two doors are the two repair bays, and then the wash bay on the far west end. You'll see that they also tried to keep the design as economical as possible, keeping it as asymmetrical as possible. The less, the less jags and jogs you have in a wall or a roof, the more economical the building designs and construction costs are going to be. That pretty well brings me to the end of the formal presentation here, and would open it up for any discussion. But between Rob and Justin and I, and Kristin and Amanda, I think we've got a wealth of information we could share. We've got a lot of history to this project, going on nine years now, on, on how we've gotten where we're at today. I hope we've displayed enough in the timeline to help everybody feel comfortable with what our, we envisioned the next steps to be as setting a new budget number, and then looking at, with the CFO, what exactly that number looks like in the upcoming budget cycle, and to see how feasible or attainable it is, and whether, to what degree, any bonding could be required. I will say off the cuff, when it comes to the finances real quick, we do have somewhere between 4 to 5 million left from that bond, once the Wells Fargo remodel is complete. So if our budget number is 15, right off the bat, you take 4 to 5 million out of that, you're sitting on about 11 million left to fund. We feel, off very cursory review, some of the capital planning for 2025, that you could probably rake in, rake back, hold back, whatever you want to call it, 3, maybe 5 million out of the 25 CIP to, to pump into this project. Again, those, those details, we would rely on Kristin and Amanda to work through with the rest of the, the department head team on the capital planning for '25, and ultimately the council making that decision. But when you look at those two numbers, 4 to 5 left over from Wells Fargo, 3 to 5 out of the 25 CIP, you're starting to look at a very, very attainable bond number that's a lot better than what it looked like 12 months ago. And so I just wanted to keep that in, in mind and put that in perspective for the council here as part of this discussion. So with that, I will quit jabbering and pass it to Rob or Justin, if you want to touch on anything that I missed, and we can stand by for questions, otherwise, Mayor.
First, I'm going to ask city manager Mac to clarify for the council and for the public what we are trying to get out of this conversation tonight.
Our goal tonight is to set the budget number, which we can then go back and build a financial plan around. So whether, as Heath said, it's, it's all funded out of the long-range plan next year or in two years, or it's a combination of, of that and bonding, whatever that might look like, that doesn't put the city in any long-term financial difficulties. So the original budget number was 7.5 million. We're four years removed from that. We're looking for a head nod on the 15 million so we can get started on building a financial plan to bring to you all.
And Officer Bob Zine, do you have anything to add? I mean, there's been a handout passed around to the council, looking at some of our expenditures and debt and things like that. So I know that that will be part of the conversation tonight. I didn't know if you wanted to just start off by...
No, wait.
Okay. City manager Mac, yeah, if you want to take...
Yeah. You all have seen this before. It is just a listing of all of the current, the current debt, our projected sales tax revenue growth, which we do budget very conservatively at a 3% growth. It shows our percentage of debt to revenue. Currently, we show in 2029, we start to fall back into what, what we consider our comfort level. We've not plugged in any additional bonding for this project. That'll come next, if, if we get the head nod on, on the number. The, the other thing to, I guess, maybe think through a little bit, when we first put City Hall out to bid, we had the budget number, it came in high. You said, hey, go see if you can negotiate. We brought back a list of valued engineered things to cut out. Okay, it doesn't make sense to do the project. We would anticipate that if we get to a point where we've identified the funding and you all give it the green light, and we put it out for bid, if it does come in higher, we would follow that same process and come back with some valued engineered options for you all to consider to bring that cost down. It doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to try to cut things out now when we don't know what the bid number is going to be. So I'll leave it at that, and we can maneuver through any questions you might have.
Councilman Peters.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick questions for you, Kristin. To set the table here for discussion, I'm looking at the percentage of debt to revenue on this handout, and it says, 2024, we're at 51%. And then on the street facility, it says 2022B. What, what bond or what calculation, what value of the street facility does this show? Does it still, does it show the current 15 million?
That's correct. Yep. So that was to the street facility, and then the other 7.5 that's listed in our City Hall intent. That was the 115 million bond. We actually issued those bonds at two separate times. So we took our first 7.5 in '21, and then we took the next 7.5 in '22. So there are two separate bonds, but one approval.
Okay. I think I've asked you this before, but what is a recommended debt to revenue percentage of where we should aim to be? I know that's probably a loaded question, but where, where should we start to get a little bit nervous?
35 to 40% is good. That's a healthy, that doesn't really put you up here where we are at the 50 is where, we knew that going into it, so I don't want the public to think, oh, it's crazy. I mean, we knew where we were going to be, but that's when we start, have to start to look at when we issue any future debt. You know, that number would essentially go up. But I would say, you know, where we've sat in the years past, about 35 to 40% is a, is a true comfort. That's why about that 2029, I highlighted that line, and you can see the comfort level goes back up, and then the available sales tax for any other projects is up to about 8 million. So that would be where we could do any of our street improvements, our park and rec improvements, any type of projects like that, equipment purchases.
Okay.
Does that help?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Good for now, thanks.
Councilman Danforth.
If I can tag on that for a little bit more clarity. On the available sales revenue then, to Councilman Peters' question, does that debt-to-revenue ratio account for an annualized 3% growth in the revenue side?
That's correct. So the only revenue, too, that I have put on this is because this is where the debt requirement comes from, is the sales tax revenue. So that projected sales tax revenue column, that is having a 3% growth each year of your sales tax revenue.
So those numbers that reflect if you do a 40%...
Yep, they're after the growth, yep, and then whatever payments are due that year.
Okay. Mayor, can I follow up with that?
Yeah, follow.
Couple of questions that I had. I know shortly after I came on the council, a long time ago, probably in that era of the 2008, '09, I came on in '10, we had seen a very significant issue, certainly within the whole United States economy, where we had some issues there. I know at the state level and city level, there were a lot of tightening of belts and reductions that had to take place. As I look at this number, the things that come to mind is, what do the numbers look like if we don't have, let's say it's flat, or if we see reductions like we saw in '08, '09, '10, whatever that timeframe was? What happens to these numbers if we, in scenarios where we go, okay, we know what 2008, '09, '10, whatever that timeframe was, I, I don't know what we saw for performance year over year over year. That would be good to know that. And then to say, what happened then, and how does that fall in? And then to say, what happened then and how does that fall into these numbers? Is that possible?
Yeah, I could throw out a couple of different projections on the growth. I could keep it flat. The, the biggest thing that this worksheet shows is the coverage requirement. So, you know, if, if we would have a couple of flat years in there, our, our first requirement is to cover our debt. That is what we have to do. So it does allow for this. So anything in that very last column, if we fall short, that's when the budgeting of that current year and then those long-term capital plans would have to do some shifting. But yeah, I could definitely run some other projections on, on the growth, on the revenue side, just to show you what something would look like. But that would be that opportunity for the council then to rearrange our current budget and some of those future capital. I don't foresee we'd ever dip down to not covering the debt, you know? That, that's really the, the main concern is to cover the debt.
Correct, but there's, there's a cause and effect.
Yes, yep.
Obviously, we can't identify what that is there, what we'd do today. I'm just trying to figure out what that picture looks like.
Definitely.
In case, because there are some indications out there that there is some slowing down taking place.
Okay.
Various parts of the economy. So I, I think that would at least be a good snapshot to take a look at.
I can do that.
What it might provide us.
Any further questions, comments, council? Councilman Jerrance.
Kristen, in the past few months, I've been asked about the legal requirements that we hold as a city on, on debt. Could you quickly review that? I know when I asked you, you were very quick off the cuff. Are you prepared for that question and if that has any bearing on this and Mike's need for projection in the next few years if we go flat or below?
Yeah, so there are, the, the debt is a legal requirement for any of the bonds that we've issued. We do have to carry a 110% coverage on them. So that's built in every time we budget. I make sure that extra cash is there to, to cover that. In terms of some of our other, on the general fund side, which this isn't, this is our capital improvement fund, but the general fund, we do have our three months of operating that we tend, not tend to, we keep, is our unrestricted. And for the time that I've been here, we have tried to maintain an unrestricted fund balance of 5 million within our capital improvement fund. That also to Councilman Danforth's question, is kind of our, our safety net too, when we have had those dips in years, we've been able to maintain our projects at a level that we want, even with the sales tax kind of going maybe down in those years. Also, when we project out sales tax, I don't just look at what the last year did, I do a five-year average because it does tend to follow that. But as far as legal debt requirements, that is all built into this worksheet. So this would maintain that coverage that's necessary. Did that answer your question or?
Um...
Yeah, go ahead.
There seemed to be a percentage, if I remember correctly.
Oh, are you talking, okay, now I know where you're going with this. So yeah, we do have our legal debt limit. That's based off of property tax values. So every year I have to plug in what the property tax assessed valuation is and then by state law, we have to maintain within its 10% of that. We can't go over it. So we're well within that. I think we're up to 80 million is what we could be in for debt and we're at 50. So, sorry. There you go. There we go.
Well, but we also got a good explanation on sales tax also.
So, sorry.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Kristen, would you mind talking through the sponsor revenue on the ICE arena? While we do have to show the additional $10 million bond as debt, what is currently reflected only reflects one of our, our naming rights sponsor. It doesn't reflect payments from our other larger contributors, right? Because we haven't received those yet?
So the column that Manager Mack is referring to is under the sponsor revenue ICE arena, I have been able to plug in what we have taken in and also what is being held right now from Build It Now. So I can carry us through, it looks like 2030 to kind of offset those payments and that did end up increasing that available sales tax after debt. So I, I did take in those dollars as was planned for the 10 million bond issue for the ICE arena. So that's why if you look under the 2022C, the 599, 213, that's just basically being offset because we do have those, that cash on hand to cover that payment. Is that what you were looking for?
Councilman Beeler.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just have some questions about the, the plans that we've got for, for the construction of the facility and a couple others. But I know I was involved with this early on with the architects and there were some question about how we mix sand and salt and what our intention is for this facility to do that, if, if we intend to do that differently than we do now by spreading it out in the ground and mixing it with a loader. Is there any intention for that sand stall or sand salt storage to be automated by chance?
That's a great question. In this particular design, we were not able to include such amenities like that. We did not have a salt-sand blending mechanism programmed in, in this budget. Main reason being cost and that being a nicety, not a necessity, we have not included that into these costs, knowing that we need to minimize these costs as much as possible.
So would that, would, how would that affect the efficiencies if we did have something like that in place? Over time, what kind of money would we save? Any idea?
Now, off the cuff, Rob or Justin, do you recall the expense for an addition of equipment like that off the top of your heads?
I don't. I don't have any numbers for that at this time.
I, I do know, let's say that it's a half million dollars. These numbers are so tight that we didn't feel like the need rose high enough to incorporate something like that at this point. I do know that there are other communities, it, it does seem like it's a, I use the word janky, it's a janky process, but other communities do use that, just simple lay down on the ground and, and mix with a payloader process. I remember the first time, 15 years ago, when I went to the city of Madison and I saw them doing that, I had the same reaction, I think, as you, Councilman Beeler. I thought, what in the heck are we doing here? But turns out, that's just, that's common practice for facilities that just want to have the luxury to get a, a formal mixing mechanism onsite and implemented.
Okay. Another question I have, a fueling station, there was some discussion about that early on, some sort of a bulk plant, some sort of facility so we could use to fill all our vehicles in a central location. And I recall, we were trying to work with the county to get them to jump in with us on some of these things. And in that process, we found that, I think it was, I think it was like $16,000 a year we could save on fueling by buying bulk instead of going to these gas stations to fuel up.
Yeah.
And we'd have that central location. So the question is, is there any type of, or is there any thought to putting in a bulk plant system there?
Thought, yes, there absolutely has been. That's another one of the niceties, not necessities, that, that fell in that category, to not put into this targeted amount as far as the current budget that's been presented here today. We also did some further exploration on that and if, I should say when, in the future, we're at a place to fund something like that, we think that there are some contractual partnerships with certain fueling companies that would actually provide a lot of the hardware with, as part of their fuel, their bid fuel services. So rather than us putting a quarter to a half a million dollars worth of tanks and pumps and infrastructure, it very well could come in a partnership through a contract with the fueling company through a bid process where we have very little upfront capital costs to get into a centralized fuel program. Did I state that accurately, Rob, based on some of your research? So we, we felt that made all the more sense on why not to include it into this project because of the potential for those capital costs being absorbed into a contract with the fueling company.
Thank you. Councilman Peters.
Thanks, Mayor. Question for you, Mr. Bane. I know this is a loaded question, so forgive me, but as we talk about justification for using $15 million of taxpayer money, can you maybe walk me through how this is going to help the longevity of the equipment? How often have we had to buy heavy diesel powered equipment over the last several years because of the wear and tear, because of the cold starts, because of the issues and maybe beyond that? On the repair side, how often do we have to repair them because they don't have maybe the proper housing? If, if you have that, it'd be great, but that'd be my question.
You know, over the years, I've been there 10 years and every winter I experience my staff struggling with starting machines that we keep. We have our truck storage shed, it's cold storage and we plug in our machines in there. We also have to plug in some stuff outside. And there's a lot of times, I would say, the majority of, of snow events, we have something that doesn't start because either, either, well, mainly because of the cold is, we just can't get stuff fired up because a breaker popped that engine block here was hooked up to, or, or we've actually had some situations where the breaker didn't pop and we've had small fires right at the plug-in and, and surprisingly, we haven't had any big fires. But that's another thing, we, we could easily lose our fleet over something like that, something small, we think small. But those types of things, you're, you're looking at 50 to 60 gallons of hydraulic fluid that you got to heat up as you go and we blow, we blow hydraulic lines all the time. It's very constant. It's, I would almost guess every event, we blow a line on something and that's downtime. We have to repair that and we have to have staff, staff stop what they're doing. Sometimes we lose a couple of members out of a team for a while while they fix the piece of equipment or other times we, we might have a spare of something, generally not, but if we have a spare of a machine, then we'll put them in that machine till we get the other one fixed. The downtime is quite a bit. The wear and tear, you know, when you're paying 300, $400,000 for a piece of equipment and it has to sit out in cold storage or outside, that's, in my mind, that's not taking care of taxpayers' dollars as well either. Yeah.
Follow-up to that, Rob. When a hydraulic line breaks, my understanding is that you have to outsource that work right now. Would you bring that in-house in this new facility? Would you have, go ahead.
Yeah, right now, we do outsource it to have the hoses made. If, if they're specialized, we have to order them, but generally, we can have them made right in town. We have no plans currently to have the tooling at our shop, but certainly if we have a shop that's new like that and we have some room, we, we right now don't have any room for something like that, but we would consider that for sure. It would save us time to be able to repair hoses in-house, but I would hope with a heated facility, that just won't happen as often either. As, as you know, when oil gets cold, the viscosity, it, it gets thick and that's hard on hydraulic systems and engines too.
Okay. Couple more questions. Can you maybe just briefly, Rob, talk about what would be brought in-house in this new facility? We talked about the repair bays. Maybe talk a little bit about what we're hiring people to do and how that would change, if at all, in this facility?
Right, we try to do as much as we can in-house right now. Things that, well, like right now, any, any of our tire repairs and things like that, we would farm out anyway. We just, we won't have the, unless we have a fleet mechanic or mechanics, it just doesn't pay to do things like that. It's, it's quicker and easier and as far as tooling to do that stuff, there's quite a few dollars in tools to take care of tires and that type of thing. The hoses, I could see where that would be handy to have that in-house. The things like a lift, right now, we, there's, there's a lot of things we do the hard way. We don't have a lift. Changing cutting edges on plows, motor graders, that's, the guys have to kneel down or be on their knees to change those cutting edges. And if we have a lift, they can stand up to do it. And that's, these, these cutting edges, two, seven-foot cutting edges on a blade are over 100 pounds a piece and it takes, it, it's a lot of work because during each snow event, each blade, each motor grader will go through one to two sets during a snow event. So there's a lot of cycling out of changing cutting edges, that type of thing. The equipment would help in-house like that, a lift would help a lot. Our, our new broom that requires, we don't have a lift right now, but it does require us to get the, the vacuum portion of, up high enough to adjust it weekly. So we're having a little bit of a trouble with that, trying to figure out how to do that at this time, so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Last question I have might be for, for Amanda or Kristen here, but it's a scary one. How much money have we spent on designing, planning on this particular project so far?
I think I, did I send that to you, Heath?
Yeah, did you have the total too? It was just shy, 1.7, 1.7 million between land costs, design costs. Those design costs were expended both to JLG and RJM, the construction manager at risk.
And that dates back just for this facility on, out there on Highway 20?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's, that's counting the land cost, right?
Correct.
So it's like 500,000 for the design and...
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Tupper.
And in those estimates, at the roughly 15 million dollars, that does not include any land that we're going to sell, right? Like the land that's...
No, that's correct.
The existing and the extra land that we have. So there will be some income on those sides of it, so.
If, if I could, Mayor or Manager Mack, maybe he was going to speak to the same thing.
Manager Mack.
I was just going to comment that Finance Officer Bob Zine and I, and I, I think Heath was part of that conversation, you know, we think the most appropriate way to start to budget for this is to not necessarily count on revenue, right, from the sale of that or revenue from the sale of the existing because all of those dollars will get dumped into the 212 fund and then can be expended out throughout the plan of, of that fund. But yes, that land is available for sale.
That was kind of my point, that this, this is not included in the total cost, so there will be some revenue coming back to go back into the 212s.
Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, a comment and my opinion. Six weeks, eight weeks ago, when we had the opportunity to go through that facility, Rob, and we, and then we headed down to, to see the Mini Haha facility type thing, it had been a long time since I'd been through some of that, some of your operation and I've never been through all of it until that day. And I will, I will say this, that whole facility is in really, really tough shape. There's, there's no question in my mind, we have to do something. It, it's tough and Rob, I was, I appreciated the opportunity to see it and, and be given that type of tour to, to really see what it's like. If you drive by it, you don't know it, but if you get in there and you see what you're dealing with and you see the structures and it's problematic. And the second thing that goes along with that is I'm sure 30, 40, 50 years ago, that the, the site was okay. But since then, LATC continues to grow, the high school continues to grow and to, to expand and do its things as they're doing again now with, with the sports facility. Just the wrong place for that type of facility with all that big equipment moving there with, during the school year, school days. So there's, I think there's, there's reasons. In my mind, there's, there's, the project at its highest level is something that we really, really do need to do and consider. Question is, how do we do it and where do we go with it? But I wanted to, to state that because I think that's important. The public doesn't see what, what you're dealing with every day and what your facility is. It would open up people's eyes if they did. And so I commend you guys for working in that environment and keeping it the way it is, but we do need to do something. If I can, a couple of things to talk to Councilman Beeler's question about the salt mix system. When we were down in, in the Sioux Falls area at the Mini Haha facility, I asked their supervisor, whatever his title is down there, if they had that and he said, no. And he said, but they did do an evaluation on that. And he said, they are expensive, they're expensive to run and maintain. And he said, we can mix what we need, we can mix our salt, sand in a matter of a couple days total and that gets us through the, through the winter. He said, it's just not a lot of time when you really look at it. And so they, they evaluated it and said, you can't, you cannot do a return on investment on it, it doesn't work. But that was an interesting conversation. I didn't expect that when I was down there. A question I do have is, have we done any kind of O and M type projections for what is, what... A question I do have is, have we done any kind of O&amp;M-type projections for what's our cost gonna be to run a facility like this versus where we're at today and what we're doing? Has that been worked up at all to know what the operating side of this may look like?
I haven't worked up any numbers for this yet at all, and I don't know if Heath has at all.
No, no, we've not looked at any increase in O&amp;M. You know, there'll be efficiencies gained, but this facility will run higher to cost based on the heating components, the vast area that we're gonna be heating and things like that. That's something we could look at having JLG help us out with, with the operating cost estimating on the new design. And then, we've got, obviously, the history of information on the old facility for years now of accumulated data there.
Yeah. The reason why I ask that is, is, you know, it's always easy to look at building something, and then we look at the operating side and go, "Oops, that's expensive." So, yeah, I mean, it would be good for us to do that ahead of time. Mr. Vann, I had sent you a text, and I haven't read mine, so I apologize, but asking if your presentation could be emailed to us or something, because there is, it was a very good presentation, I appreciate that, but some of my questions are embedded probably in that, and you were awful quick. I couldn't write that quick when I was trying to make my notes. But if you could do that, I would appreciate that if it hadn't been done.
Got it sent.
Oh, good. Gotta check my emails. Thank you very much.
Councilman Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Tupper. I just have a couple of comments. One comment is that, at the end of the day, our citizens, every year, want us to be more efficient and faster at getting rid of their snow. Every year, we have this. And I can't imagine how this wouldn't help that issue. You know, Rob, I hate to say this, you know, I was a red-haired stepchild, and I think that's what this street facility's been for a long time, too. And I think it's overdue by a long time, and I just, I absolutely believe this is the right thing to do. And this is, we've been looking at this for the greater part of, what, five, 10 years? You know, and seriously looking at it for the last few. And so, I think, I gotta say, I was very pleasantly surprised to see the budget numbers that we're looking at now compared to what they were. That really surprised me. So, I'm glad to see that. But man, this is, in my opinion, way overdue. And God bless you, Rob.
Councilman Tupper?
Yeah, if we think of the, where your office is right now, Rob, that was, how long has the street department been in that? 25 years, probably?
Yeah, the office, or where I'm at, used to be the DOT.
That's what I mean. They gave it up 25, 30 years ago because it was outdated for them, and we're still using it, so.
Yeah. Actually, the building I'm in, the city was looking at leveling that, oh, probably 18 years ago. And they ended up putting a new roof on the building, but...
Bennerson Shep was up anyhow, so. Yeah, you've made do pretty well, and you know where I stand on this. It's a project that's, and I think we've, you know, a few months ago, we gave staff a job to go out and look at pre-engineered design compared to what we were gonna do. I think we look at the numbers now compared to what they were. I commend the staff on that. They did an excellent job of that. The meeting with Kristen the other day, I feel a lot more comfortable about moving forward with this project, so, thank you.
Any further comments, questions? I guess I'll say something. If I, if I lack enthusiasm about this, it's not for the project. I like the project, I have always been a champion for it, and for the people at the street department. My unease about this is simply the global and the United States economy. We are experiencing very low growth right now in the city of Watertown. We are not hitting our projections of 3% growth. So, for me to approve or vote to approve this, I will need to see those projections of what the debt to revenue is with a 0%, with flat, with 1%, because right now, we're at 1%. And that is incredibly concerning for me to approve another project. However, I've gotta say that the numbers that have been being presented, and the idea at least, is far more promising than what I was feeling coming into this meeting tonight. I'm still very concerned for things out of our control. And that's the deal. I commend everyone here for the things that we can control, but there are obviously a lot of things that we can't, and that is what I am concerned about. So, that's my unease about the project. It's not about the project, it's, the project is great, I want it, but we also have other concerns as well, like even in the state of South Dakota, depending upon how the November election comes. And if the repeal, if the, if all of the tax on food or consumables is passed, then we're looking at a potential, a big hit. I know that, I know the numbers, but that's 1.5, $2 million that you take right out of the 212 fund. So, then you're all of a sudden, "Wait a minute, if we wanna keep that $5 million cushion, where are we gonna find that?" It's just very difficult. And I know that we've, I know that everyone's been looking at it, but again, that's just the concern that I have. It's nothing against the project. I commend you for all the work that you've done, all the work, Rob, that, or Superintendent Bane, and sorry, you and all your people do. It's amazing, and I've gotta say, I've received, this is slightly off-topic, but I have been receiving a lot of compliments on the roads. And then, for, more than that, the number of complaints that I've gotten has dwindled to very, very little compared to when I first got on the council in my first year at mayor. It is amazing what you have been able to do. I credit City Manager Mack and the council for voting to appropriate a lot more money for the streets than we had in previous years, but you have done good work with the money that we have given you. So, I thank you for that. You've made my life a lot easier, and you've made the life for citizens of Watertown better. But with that said, love the work that you're doing. I like this project, I just need to see those numbers before I would vote for it. Councilman Peters?
Well, a couple questions. So, is the action, maybe define the action tonight again. Is the action to give staff direction on the appropriation, the dollar amount? Or what is the specific next step we're...
The next step, we'd like some direction from you all to assess what a $15 million project would look like in the overall budget?
Okay.
And bring that back to you. We think 15 is the, is the number to get us what we need, and we'll handle future growth of the operations, including fleet maintenance, those types of things. But we now need to spend some time sussing out the numbers and see what combination of options we have available to us could make it viable.
Mayor?
Director Vann?
If I could take on to that, that, and I think this goes without saying to everybody in the council, but that 15 million is based on today's cost estimate from local contractors. Obviously, if we have to delay because the 15 doesn't fit into next year's or the long-range CIP in the near future, that price will obviously escalate. And again, I think that goes without saying, you all realize that, but I just wanted to point that out and be on the record, that that 15 million will grow. I would say it will grow even within this year, based on if we were able to get it to bid yet this fall versus next spring. That number could grow. So, I don't wanna be held to that exact number here for the next 12 to 24 months, just wanted to emphasize that. The other point I was gonna make quick related to that is if, if the council's comfortable for us exploring what that 15 million budget number looks like in the budgetary planning, one of our next discussions would have to be with our CMAR, our construction manager at risk, at some point sooner than later. We're at a clean point of severing our services with them because we're at the final design phase. But if they feel that that number's simply not attainable to them, and we feel that we could attain that number through an open bid, now would be the time to sever that contract with the CMAR, move forward with an open bid project. That was the other point I wanted to make here yet today, because that's an important factor. Once we get to that point down the road, we wouldn't be taking this offer bid anytime soon. We gotta vet the budget stuff, and then the council take action to approve the formal financial plan, and then we would talk about how we're gonna bid this thing.
Councilman Shuddy?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. One thing, I just wanted to echo the, a lot of the others that have shared their desire to help keep our street department moving forward, the facility. It's been wonderful what they've been doing. I think Rob and many others know that I've been a big advocate of our streets being improved and our facility there. Of course, in the last three years, the market, the things we've had to put expenditures on for capital improvement. I brought this up one other time, but one of my, probably one of my main reasons for, that I really wanna get clarified in my own mind, would be like my parents in farming in the 80s, when the 80s economy, farming just didn't go well, and they had two girls in college, I was still in high school, and just the, they were able to make it through that season in the 80s because as farmers, they didn't, they didn't have a lot of, didn't acquire a lot of debt, and they really kept that in balance. And we never know when something's gonna happen that, you know, you, there's many that did go bankrupt, but they didn't, because they had their numbers, they kept them in line, they didn't acquire a lot of debt. So, I just, I keep that in mind as I think about these projects, I think about this. I guess that's one of my main concerns, too, is the, is just working with Kristen on the numbers, making, you know, where are we really at? Do we really wanna go beyond 51? I guess that's just what I'm still sitting on, too. As much as I wanna see this done, I just wanna make sure we're good stewards of the financials that we have been given. So, anyway, I just wanted to share my perspective on this.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Jurins?
Well, I've been a little silent so far. Good to hear everyone's comments. And Rob, I am all for a facility. I am just not for a $15 million facility. And the comments that I've received from constituents really echoes that. Now, had they, if they go dig into what we've heard tonight, will that change? I don't think so. I think they want a facility. I think they want their streets taken care of, I think they want their snow moved. I think we all want all of that. But when I look at us pushing the sales tax revenues to the edge, where if we need to do a project in the next five years or three years, where we have to go back out and ask people to, ask for a bond that's gonna raise their property taxes to pay for an east fire station that so many of us are advocates of, to, that is a, that is going to be a no-go for a lot of people in our community. I go back to some homeowner logic, I go back to some business logic, but I'm gonna go back as far as what Dan Shuddy just mentioned, and that is working on, in farming back in the 80s. And when we didn't have the money, we scaled our project back to make it work. And then, when we sell the land, or we sell something, then we amp up our project, or we add to our project. Where, why doesn't that work in city government? Why are, why don't we sell that land and then add to our project? Why can't we scale this back, still get a great facility, still get a place to house the trucks, and get these guys a break room? The people who are working, the 12 employees, so they can have a break room that fits all of them. I mean, why can't that be accomplished and we can still get a facility? Those are the questions that I will be waiting for, like on sales tax projections, just the simple things. But if I go back to just simple logic, this number's not working right now. Maybe that'll change.
Any further comments or questions? Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, it's really, I don't know if it's a comment, question, whatever it is, but Lynn just mentioned some things that, to me, come into play here. And, you know, we're talking right now, we're talking about, you know, we're past the, over the hump in regards to the city hall thing, we're looking good there. But you mentioned the east fire station. I'm gonna call it the east first response station. That's been talked about for a lot of years. The other thing that was mentioned not too long ago was, you know, the renovation of the Mesa Ice Arena once, what are we gonna do with that? So, in my mind, I think we have to, we can't take a look at a snapshot, we have to take a look at the big picture. And we have to understand what those are gonna be, and what their priorities are for us, and if we do them, when we do them, how we do them. I don't think we can simply look at a street department and say, "Yep," when we know we've got other things that we wanna get accomplished in the not-too-distant future. And how we accomplish that, you know, we gotta think out of the box a little bit. And it may not be the most perfect thing. I remember when we started our business, we didn't have a building to go into, we rented a really bad, ugly little building, and that's how we started. Knowing that it wasn't ideal, but that's where we started. And then, once we got our feet on the ground, we built a new building. And so, it, a lot of times, it's not that it's ideal, but it's what you gotta do. And so, that's what I wanna make sure we do, is look at these other needs as well as this street department. Again, I don't question the need to do something, I just wanna understand what our picture looks like of overall our needs, and what we as a council, we're the ones that are defining that priority, and we have not done that on a big-picture basis. We need to take steps sideways, we need to take a look at all that, we need to see how that all flows regards to funding, and what those opportunities are. And that's where I'm at. I'm not ready to say, "Yeah, let's do this." I mean, I agree with the need. I got a few more pieces of a puzzle that I need in order to see where we're at with the big picture, and that's all of Watertown and what our needs are. So, just my thoughts.
Any further comments, council? Well, I don't think that anyone on the council was against getting more numbers, more information, if that's what you were after. I mean, the desire among the council is obviously to see what we can do to accomplish this. It's just how to pay for it, I think, is the question. I don't think anyone questions the concept, the need, the desire to do something for our street department and for the citizens of Watertown. So, I think that you have a clear direction to give, come back to us with more information on what the numbers would look like under different scenarios. Councilman Peters?
I better say this. You know, I don't disagree with anything that Councilman Jurins or Danforth said. I think I'm getting a little bit of Wells Fargo PTSD from this conversation, and I guess my point in saying that is, we should, we should make that a priority of the council to look at things globally, because the longer that we stay in limbo, the worse it looks on the community, and the more we have dollars there that aren't being deployed where they should be deployed. So, I would just throw that out there, and I'm not saying $15 million is the number or not. I think to Councilman Danforth's point, snapshot, looking at these numbers, and I'm, you know, albeit, I'm looking at a spreadsheet here of numbers today and projections, looks like it could work. Looks like $15 million works in the budget. But the fire station and other things are certainly worth discussing. We just make it, we need to make it a priority to have that discussion as soon as possible, because we've got $1.7 million of land and plans sunk, and we need to pull the trigger one way or the other. There we go. There's my rant.
All right. Any further rants? All right. Thank you very much, and we'll proceed with the, with the meeting. So, next up is open forum. If there is anyone who would like to address the council on something not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so. Just please identify yourself for everyone, even though I know who you are.
Absolutely. For those of you who don't know me, and for other folks in the community, my name is DeeDee Whitman. I currently am the executive director of Mystic Plant Zone, a mental health wellness and plant-based business here in Watertown, South Dakota. It was legally established, starting May 5th, with our opening soft launch, if you wanna call it that, and I was happy to bring y'all some plants. I hope that your mental health and wellness are doing very well so far this lovely spring as we hop... spring as we hop into summer. And I just wanted to stop in, I'm going to be very brief, and invite you all to my wedding reception on Thursday. So please join us. We live near the Mallet House. You'll notice the party when you get there. So drop on by. The ceremony is at 5:30, and that's for immediate family and friends. And then the party is to follow. We will be having delicious homemade Alabama pulled pork with Carolina barbecue sauce, Roll Tide, potato salad, and deviled eggs that are my granny's recipe, and my grandma's brownies on top of cake. So I hope you can all make it. We're going to have all sorts of delicious beverages and it's also going to be a display of our garden and our business. So our business facility is available for anyone to drop in and create their own fresh arrangements at any time. This is one of my peonies. She's now a little bit sad. I might try to revive her with some water. But I just wanted to extend that invitation to you all, and thank you for all of your support through the years. I wouldn't have be a business owner if I hadn't started in public service. And if I hadn't been inspired by the people in this room and by people like my granddaddy Doug Whitman from Camp Hill, Alabama. So I'm bringing all of that love here, and I hope to see you all in my backyard. And the last thing I'm going to say is that I am very sorry to say that I am grieving. My dog Rufus died yesterday on Father's Day. And he was the sweetest boy you've ever met, and some of you have met him. And he was a therapy dog in training. And he volunteered at Jenkins. We were just starting to go there. We went to the hospital. We were going to go to cancer centers. Everyone he met, he loved. So I am sending all of the love I have for my little Rufus to you all and to all of your fur babies and all of your fur grandbabies and beyond. And so we will be holding a service, a memorial service for Rufus tomorrow. And you can check that out on our Facebook page. We do have a Facebook page and Instagram page and a website that's in process for Mystic Plant Zone. So give us, check us out sometime. And know that we love you and that we know that you are going to make good district decisions, especially regarding the street facilities, ice facilities, because we've seen it. We've seen your work. We see your work in action. We see your passion and your commitment for this community. And it comes from a love of service and the love of Jesus. And I'm going to be sending that to all of you. And God bless. I hope to see you on Thursday. I'll be the one in the white dress. So we should take some pictures. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Are those mice in that?
Those are two emotional support rats, and that is my son Oliver. This is his first city council meeting. So I don't know if y'all have like a sticker like the police do, right? So yeah, he's really been enjoying it. And one of the, the, the components of our business is based on Rufus, who we also lovingly call Tippy after my granny's Tippies. She had at least two Tippy wiener dogs. And so they were the inspiration for Rufus and for us to have therapy animals for people who are dealing with mental health issues, from anxiety and depression to bipolar disorder to complex PTSD. And because of the things that have happened to myself and my son in the last couple of years, we are being treated for PTSD. And one of those treatments is emotional support animals. And so we have two emotional support animals with us tonight. One of them is Goldie, and the other is what, Oliver? What's, what's your rat's name? Sinky? So Goldie and Sinky, they're his emotional support rats, and we encourage people to give them pets and love. They do give a lot of snuggles and love.
We only have like 30 seconds left.
All right. Oliver would like me to share with you that we also have the misfortune of losing a baby rat, Winky Junior. And she was a very sweet, loving little rat, and she appeared to have fallen asleep and not wakened up. So that was a very sad day for us. But we do have our, our lovely little Goldie and Sinky now. So we'd love for you to meet them, but we probably are not going to last the whole meeting. But we're very interested in how the government works, and it's nice to see a functioning government like we have here in Watertown.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on something? All right. Hearing none, I'll close open forum, and we'll move on to City Manager Mac. Okay. Item 9A is an approval of bid award for the 2024 Airport Taxway and Egg Area Improvements to J&amp;J Earthworks in the amount of roughly $2,600,000. City Manager Mac or Director Von I? Director Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Manager. Yeah, this is a exciting project. It's been underway for a few years now, since initial discussions began on the need for additional egg spray operations out at the airport. We've got a private egg spray operator that has been wanting to locate to Watertown. Based on all the airport regulations, we simply have not been able to accommodate a full-time location for that operator until now through this project. We've been able to gear up for this project through the airport's Airport Improvement Plan. We've gotten it on the appropriate list for the FAA funding eligibility. And we'd like to move forward with this bid award in order to accomplish the construction of this egg spray area, which includes grading for building sites and also the construction of a taxiway to accommodate the egg spray airplanes that'll be operating out of there. If I remember right, I believe there would be a location for up to three, is it three or four? Egg spray hangar locations along this taxiway that will be built. This will, this construction will occur north of what's known as the Old Stone Hangar, our historic structure out there on the east-central part of the airport grounds. And far enough north that we were able to check all the historic preservation boxes related to that, that facility. But I know the, the egg operator that, that contacted us a couple of years ago now is, is excited to move forward with constructing his hangar once these improvements are made. I do also need to note that the funding for this is eligible for the AIP, the Airport Improvement Program, and bipartisan infrastructure law grants to the tune of 90% federal, 5% state, and 5% city. So the estimated local share is a little over $430,000. Of that $430,000, almost $300,000 of that are for utilities that are not eligible for federal funding. So what we would do is assess those utility costs back to each egg operator as they plug in and, and build their facilities. With that, I'd stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Moved by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Let's open it up for conversation questions. Anything? All right. Hearing no questions, no comments. I'm just going to do a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is a first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown for a portion of Bourbon's addition from I-1 Light Industrial District to C-3 Highway Commercial District. Director Von I or Community Development Manager Hampton, which one?
I can certainly tee it up, Mayor. Yeah, a simple zoning request. I do have a map here that I'll pull up for, for reference. But the owner of this land, Brian Brandright, is the applicant and seeking to petition a rezone for a portion of the property in Bourbon's addition from I-1 Light Industrial to C-3 Highway Commercial District to better accommodate his anticipated use for that land. This land is a, a portion of, I believe, what used to be part of the Dunick property and an area that was sold off from there. It's got some existing structures on it that frankly are irrelevant to the rezone, but they would be modified or demolished in order to accommodate the, the future land use plans. I've shared my screen to Teams to pull up the map here. This is a snapshot of our zoning map. Here we have, right through the middle of this map is 31st Street. To the west, we have Willow Creek Drive. And off the map to the northwest here is 28th Street and the Ice Arena to the north. But just this blue area that's outlined as part of this larger purple I-1 zoned area is what's, just the blue outline area is what's proposed to be rezoned. With that, I can stand by for any questions. I believe this was recommended for approval by the planning commission unanimously.
Okay, this is just a first reading, so no motion necessary, but let's open it up for discussion. I see Mr. Brandright here. Do you want to add anything?
Hi, Brian Brandright here. Yeah, I just, I'd like to take it out of the I-1, put it into the C-3, so it's a buildable lot. That area will more than likely all be going C-3 down the road here, so no big changes, nothing that won't be happening down the road, I don't believe, so.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Brian, it's not a question of you. It's probably more a question for Mr. Von I, but you know, the whole issue of at some point needing to build 31st. How does that come into play with this and similar types of things that, I agree with Mr. Brandright. This is probably over time going to convert to commercial uses. And so how do we, how do we deal with that? How does this come into play with what will be a need at some point to fund and replace that road?
Yes. The million-dollar question of 31st Street, that's, that's a great point to bring up in this discussion, especially at a first reading. So the, our take, the staff's take on 31st Street, you know, the vast majority of that roughly mile stretch of, of roadway is still in the township. There are segments of it that are annexed into the city. But overarching, it still remains outside the proper city limits, meaning it's not of the city's jurisdiction. This portion here is annexed. However, in lieu of requiring the applicant to develop just this frontage of 31st, I don't know if you can see my cursor here on my map on Teams, but rather than having the developer build just that small segment of 31st or their half of it, it seems to make logical sense that we would execute a waiver right to protest, which means that cost assessment for their portion of that roadway would be their responsibility at point in time in the future if the city were to have to come through to build that, construct it with city costs, and assess back to the adjacent property owners.
Yeah, definitely.
Heath, does that come at the rezoning, or does that come if and when a building permit comes out? When does the waiver come into play?
We would execute that with the, the issuance of a building permit.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Any further discussion? All right. Thank you. We'll close that. We'll go to item 11A. An application for a special event retail on-sale license to Lake Area Zoological Society from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Friday, June 28th, 2024 for the Sippin Safari Event. We'll go to Officer Bobzine.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing more to add. This is a special event. Notice feeds, everything's in line. Been doing this for quite a few years, and I, I know Jamie's here if she wants to add anything, but thank you.
Jamie, would you like to come up and plug the event? I would like you to come up and plug the event, or promote the event.
Now I'm on. So I am Jamie Stricker. I am the zoo educator at the Bramble Park Zoo. This is the biggest fundraiser of the year for the Lake Area Zoological Society, so that is our nonprofit side at the zoo. And we have earmarked all funds raised from the event to helping with the wolf habitat renovation that will hopefully be starting this fall. So this is a great event. It gets adults out at the zoo, so 21 and over only. We have multiple food trucks around the zoo and two live bands, and it's just a great evening. Some people say if they don't have kids, they don't come to the zoo anymore, or if you do come with your kids, you spend all your time chasing them around and you don't get to enjoy the zoo. So just a nice evening. Hopefully the weather cooperates for an adult-only fundraiser at the zoo.
And do you just show up, or do you have to buy tickets in advance?
Tickets are recommended. We only have 300 tickets, and we have the last couple of years sold out. So 300 tickets, they are $40 each. You can either purchase them at the zoo or at any of the cowboy liquor locations. They have them too. So yeah, get your tickets ahead of time. I have posters if anybody needs them for any reason to hang at your business or anywhere around. I have those.
All right. Councilman Jurens?
Jamie?
Yes.
Quick follow-up?
Yes.
Any way that people can support this cause, even if they don't get a ticket or gone for the weekend, what's, what's the best?
Yes, definitely. Great question. Thank you. So right now, we are looking for items for the raffle baskets. So if anybody wanted to do a monetary donation, which, thank you, Randy, I have your money sitting on my desk. So monetary donations, we can purchase things that we need. So if we have maybe some materials and need a nice basket to put it in or something to add to our certificates and things, or if you have an item that you want to donate, we will accept anything. And the other thing is, we have a few more dollars we're looking for to help us offset our marketing. And then also one of the food trucks. I'm still looking for about $500 to pay the food truck. Because once you purchase your $40 ticket, everything at the zoo is free that night except for the wingspan game and the raffle items. But they get all of their food, drinks, entertainment with that $40. So yes, if anybody wants to donate anything, give me a call too.
And how would they reach you?
At the zoo, 882-6269, or sometimes this time of year, I'm really crazy running around with school kids. So email would be easy, and that is jstricker@brambleparkzoo.com.
All right. And I messed up. I need to take in, I need a motion for approving the application. Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Okay. Let's continue the discussion if anyone has anything. All right. I'm not hearing anything. I appreciate your time coming here, Officer Bobzine. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed, say nay. Officer Bobzine?
Okay. Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 12A, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Item 12A is an approval to supplement the Watertown Police Department budget by roughly $21,000 for purchasing an enclosed trailer to support youth and drug abuse prevention programs. City Manager Mac?
Thank you, Mayor. What you have in front of you is a budget supplement for the police department to buy a trailer. We're doing the budget supplement because this is from the opioid settlement fund, so we need to have the spending authority within the general fund. The fund is restricted and is, and can only be used for certain items. This fulfills those requirements. Assistant Chief Remmers and Captain Rehorst are here and can answer any of your questions about the trailer itself or about any of their programs.
All right. Officers, would you like to add anything before we open it up? Please do. How about I rephrase? Officers, add something.
Sure thing. Thank you for having us. Yeah, these, this trailer is something that we would use on a weekly basis throughout the warmer months of the year. It would be used for timing of races. As some of you may know, about, I don't know, 10 or 12 Saturday mornings every year throughout the summer, we're out timing races. This would be nice to get us out of the elements a little more easily to do that. It would be used for a drug take-back program to promote DARE and the rest of our DASH program, which is Drug-Free, Alcohol-Free, Safe and Healthy. It would also be the trailer that we would be using to give away ice cream. That's another, probably 10 times a year that we're doing that throughout the community. So this trailer would just come in really handy. In addition to that, at certain events like our National Night Out or potentially even Thursday Night Live or other Cookin' on Compesca, where we have a presence at some of those, this would be kind of a home base for the police department, officers who are on scene to, to work out of.
Thank you. Officer Rehorst?
I think Assistant Chief Remmers explained it quite well there. It would be a great resource for us to have and available to us for all those events and significantly contributing to the opioid epidemic and trying to curb some of those things. And that specifically, like City Manager Mac alluded to, the And that specifically like City Manager Mac alluded to, the, the purpose of that funding, which comes down from that pharmaceutical settlement agreement that comes down to the state and local levels.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the supplement. Motion made by Councilman Peters, was it? Peters? Seconded by Councilman Jerrans. Discussion, Councilman Peters?
I think it's worth noting that it's Team Lodge right here in Watertown. We're keeping it local. I think that's worth noting. Well done, guys. Thank you.
Nice. Any for, Councilman Jerrans?
You got me on the ice cream.
Any further discussion? All right. Let's get the WPD their trailer. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll. If you're in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Jerrans?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shetty?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. Councilman Tupper, how are fireworks?
You know, fireworks are coming right along and I found some pretty generous donors in the community, but I, I need to find some more. So, if you were on my list last year and I haven't got to yet, look forward to seeing me. Or if you'd like to join my yearly list, I'd be more than happy to write you down on one and, and I just dropped a stack of donation sheets off in the finance office today and, and it's been a fun time, a little bit, little bit behind, so I'll have to hit the road running here in the next couple of days and, and get to going, but I look forward to it. It's a great event in, in the community. One thing I think I forgot to mention is last year's estimated count on the grounds were between 8,000 and 10,000 people. So, it's a lot of people come out to the fireworks display. That many people are going to come out and listen to City Manager Mac singing the National Anthem. So, get your voice in line and, and you know, you're going to have to reach a long ways, but they got a microphone, but, but Councilman Bueller did an outstanding job last year, so get some big shoes to fill there, but like I say, I'll be knocking on your door. You know, that night, well, first off, on the 3rd of July, as we all know, it is illegal to shoot fireworks within city limits of Watertown. We are going to open up, and we did this in the past, the premier soccer field, or excuse me, premier softball field for any residents of Watertown want to come and shoot fireworks. You'll park over in the ends of parking lot. It'll all be supervised by Louz and of course, myself and I haven't never had to get the police to come and supervise because everybody behaves, but, so that will run until whenever, we'll start about 8 o'clock and run until about 11, because I do got to get home, you know, I'm kind of an old guy, I gotta get my sleep, but then the next night, I think he probably starts about 5 o'clock with the inflatables. We have music there, great time for the kids. They get out and have a great time and, and like I say, I'll be coming knocking on doors and I couldn't do it without the great help of many, many departments from the city. So, I, I don't want to mention them all because I know I'll forget somebody again, but hey, there's not too many departments I don't touch, so thanks everybody for their help and if anybody would like to help, just call me at Watertown Ford Greisler and I'll definitely take your money, so, or get ahold of Mayor. So, he's been gracious to help me with the fundraising part. I'm just a big kid at heart, so when it comes to fireworks, I'm kind of a, what do they call them? Pyromaniacs or something, so.
Any further announcements or items for discussion? City Manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. A few items. A reminder that tomorrow at 10 o'clock, we have the groundbreaking for the new pickleball facility that'll be onsite, so just east of the Wellness Center. Hope to see you all there. Last week, at the end of the week, you might have noticed an influx of mustaches in our community. We were fortunate to host the State Fire School, so we had what, 550 firefighters from around the state who were here for three days learning and enjoying the Watertown community. If you made it out to Thursday Night Live on Friday, you were treated to a real great show with the water fights and the pipe and drum group out of Aberdeen. That was, that was really great. On Friday, a few of us were able to receive a check from MRES, who are partners with the utility, about a $54,000 rebate for the ICE arena, which was a very nice generous, generous gift on their behalf. Wednesday is Juneteenth, so city offices will be closed and if you're so inclined, you could check out Town Players on Thursday and Friday. There's a really great rendition of Finding Nemo I Hear and it might be fun for you to take that in, particularly the Friday show. I Hear Marlin is great. So, with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Councilman Peters?
Do you have a 20-second update on the city hall project?
It's moving along as it should. Pouring footings, lots of work happening over there. They had both of the, the east and the west doors open today. You could see all the way through. I think, I think the basement's been gutted to the extent it's supposed to be. Carpet's all out, so they are cooking along.
All right. Thank you. There's no reason to go into executive session, therefore I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth.